To the Board of Trustees meeting for February 28th at 7:00 PM, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge allegiance to the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for veterans, for responders, individuals and families in need, as well as the people who are crying for their safety and security. Thank you, folks. Just sit down, please. Like to do a roll call vote, please. Trustee Corrigan?
Present.
Trustee Albert?
Present.
Trustee Hagan?
Present.
And Trustee Soberman?
Present.
Very good, folks. We are, we're now at the Village Board of Trustees Workshop Meeting for February 28th at 7:00 PM. Our actual next meeting will be Monday, March 7th at 7:00 PM. And we'll discuss about maybe going live on that meeting. Before we leave tonight, maybe by the end of the meeting, make up our minds. I'll ask you at the end, maybe we'll go find a meeting for that one. The upcoming meeting is the regular meeting scheduled for Monday, April 4th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And the workshop meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 25th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. I guess it's 7:02 now. We don't have to, we're not having a public hearing now, but the XL Communication was the Avon property, okay? We've talked with them and we're gonna adjourn that without a date because they even feel it would be better to renotice it when that time comes. So it's still out there, it's still a project in play. There's just more paperwork they have to give us, there's more things has to be done there. And it's something that we actually have the ability to save them time by putting it into our master plan. The firm we hired to work is working on the master plan, they've been doing parking studies, they've actually been doing a lot of work. Actually retrieving a lot of information is very important into that whole project and plan. So we will be having a meeting with them shortly and then to get our input as well as theirs, directions they see, directions we see. But by doing the comprehensive plan, you actually save them time with the, with the because of the comprehensive plan and you could actually put that in your plan itself, okay? So that'll, that's what's gonna happen, that'll adjourn without date. The Community Development Block Grant, I guess I'll let Fred, Fred talk on that. Fred, are you there? Fred Rella?
He is, but he's muted, I can see that. All right.
Hello.
Hello, Fred.
Hello, everybody. Yes, the Community Development Block Grant is an annual grant that is floated by Rockland County. It's HUD money that the county receives and then we in turn apply to the county for it. It's for low to moderate income areas of the village. We have one area of the village, we used to have two areas of the village that fell within that category. It's over basically from West Maple Avenue in the West Ward going towards the athletic fields over near Parking Lot A in that area, okay? We found out about this grant just recently that we had to apply for and one of the requirements is that we have to have two public hearings with our Citizen Advisory Committee and they're the ones that float up the idea for the grant. And then in turn, we present that to the Board of Trustees, which we'll do on March 7th, next Monday. And we'll also have a public hearing and a resolution that needs to be passed. The actual application is due March 31st. I do wanna just, I'll talk more about it on Monday night, but we looked at several projects that we were considering and we landed on the repaving of Parking Lot A. Okay, Parking Lot A is the parking lot which is across from Curly Corner and Olay-Olay where Olay-Olay used to be. That lot which is, you know, for shoppers, commuters and residents. It's a multi-use parking lot. When we were looking at it, the maximum amount of this grant that the county gives out to any municipality is $200,000. And then we contribute 10% on top of that. They look for a contribution, so that would be $220,000. When Charles Sawicki and myself looked at this originally, we thought that we would need to do some extensive drainage work like we're gonna have to do with Parking Lot B. So the resolution that was drafted originally last Friday said that it was for the repaving of Parking Lot A and to upgrade the drainage. We're gonna take the drainage aspect out of that, okay? So it's just gonna be to upgrade Parking Lot A, but due to the cost of asphalt, it's increased significantly, particularly with what you're seeing going on now with the cost of, price of a barrel of oil and et cetera, that we're still going to be asking for the full $200,000 for that parking lot, okay? And I just wanna acknowledge the members of the team who worked diligently. Ernie Bosco, which a lot of people know, Francis Glick, who has a business downtown, Teresa Sheddler, Kathy Van Sickle, Charlie Rogers, and then Charles Sawicki and myself. So I wanna thank that committee and I'll talk a little bit more about it on Monday night.
Thank you, Fred.
Do me one, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. Steve, you had a question, I apologize.
I was just gonna ask, you mentioned Parking Lot B as well, what is the status of that at this point? I know we had talked about that in the past.
Yeah, Parking Lot B, we received two Community Development Block Grants for that, totaling $172,000. That's the parking lot across from the post office, okay? The projected cost of that project is $250,000. Okay, that's escalated to due to the cost of asphalt basically going up. That project, all the paperwork is in place, we have the agreements all signed with the county and everything. And we're going to do that project in the late spring or during the summer of this year.
Great, super. Thank you for the update on that.
That's great.
That was what I was gonna ask you to tell them about, Fred.
All right.
Thank you so much, Fred. Always good for you. Always good news.
It's nice to hear, thanks.
Okay, we want the attorneys, anything from the attorneys at this point? Terry or?
No, not really. You mentioned the properties, we've got a number of properties that have fairly involved zoning applications coming up in the future and, you know, you and I have been working on trying to get those on the right track to go forward and it's mainly what's been going on.
Well, the, just so you know, the Old Nevada's property by Brookfield, they have now submitted their plan to the planning board. So that is, that will be, actually they, when they submitted, they were incorrect on a few things and Terry Rice very quickly straightened them out and they have submitted them now also. So the planning board will start, you know, working on that. At the same time, we will, we will have a, an outside planner who the actual company, the construction company themselves pay for. The builder pays for, not, doesn't come from taxpayers' money because there's such extensive projects. They have to put money into escrow and as they do work, it comes out of those funds, not out of taxpayers' funds.
Planner or presumably an outside engineer because of the scope of the project and so forth will be paid, paid for out of the escrow that they provide. So that will, you know, we need extensive expert review of these things and that will be paid for by the applicant.
Wonderful.
I have nothing beyond that. I spoke with the mayor earlier or texted with him, I should say, and Terry and I have been in touch still. Unless anybody has anything for me, I have nothing new to report.
Well, I have a question. If, if you lawyers could check, if it's easy, the terms and exclusions in the Chamber of Commerce is, you know, I think it's insurance policy?
That's one of, one of the things I brought up, one of the issues I had, they haven't provided that to me as yet. You know, likelihood is it's not an impediment, but I always have to look at the worst possible scenario. So I wanna see what the policy says, yes.
That's great, thanks, Terry.
I haven't had it as yet.
Okay, guess we're done with the attorneys, I guess we'll go to the fire department. Chief Coffer, please.
Good evening, Village Board. Just two items on the agenda for this evening. The first is on Monday, the regular board meeting, a vote for a new member of the volunteer host company, Katrine Delaney. And the second item on the agenda is the submission of the preliminary report for the service award program for 2021. If the village is inclined to vote on this on Monday, we will post it in the firehouse for 30 days and then another vote will be taken at the following meeting after, if it's before, if the meeting's before the 30 days, it'll have to wait till the following month.
That's the low set, right, Jeremy?
Correct.
That's it? That's all good? That's all we have, Jeremy?
That's it. And did you guys receive a copy of the report? I had submitted it to Melissa for distribution. I don't know if she passed it out to everybody, but there is a copy on file with the clerk's office.
No, I haven't.
She'll be selling out with your whole file, you'll be getting the whole file on that, Fred.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Chief Locklin, is Chief Locklin, Police Department?
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few items to update the board on. In the month of February, the police department's responded to 780 calls so far. This Thursday, March 3rd, we're hosting our annual Dare Snow Tubing Trip at Camp Call Mountain from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The trip is open to all RP Connor 5th grade students. And so far, we have about 70, a little more than 70 kids signed up for it. It's been a big hit with the kids in the past, they really love it, so we're looking forward to that, they should have a good time.
And I'm sorry, what was, what was that date?
It's this Thursday, March 3rd.
I'm sorry, what kind of trip is it, Andy?
It's a Dare Snow Tubing Trip, so the Dare students that are in 5th grade, it's open to all the 5th graders at RP Connor School and we take them to Camp Call Mountain in Mawa and they go snow tubing down the hill for a couple hours, they have a really good time.
Well, that's beautiful. On that mountain, it was called the Mighty Gah.
Well, they, they, they seem to really enjoy it, so we're definitely looking forward to it.
I grew up there, so yes, it is a fun mountain for children.
Very nice.
Fred, if you need some fake ID, I can give you a 5th grade fake ID.
We could probably sneak you in with an extra ticket if you want, Fred.
That's so sweet of you guys.
I know my son, my son did it a few years ago, he's in 8th grade now, but he did it when he was in 5th grade, he had a great time.
Andy, what time was that? I'm sorry.
6:00 PM it starts and the tickets go until 8:00 PM.
Okay.
Also with Dare, our registration just opened up for our spring hockey season for Dare Hockey. That registration's open to all, this is the older kids, so it's open to all the middle school and high school students. If anybody is looking to register for that, they can file links on either our website or Facebook page or they could pick up a registration at the police department. We've also dropped off registrations at the school that should have been passed out to the kids. We're in the process of conducting interviews to fill our vacant police officer position. We'd sent out canvas letters to the reachable candidates on the village residency list and we've been conducting interviews. We hope to have a candidate to recommend to the board for nomination, hopefully by the next regular meeting, if not, it'll be the following meeting. The last item I wanted to talk to the board about is in regards to a police department community survey. The board members that were on the board when we went through the police reform and reinvent, reinvention collaborative process may remember as a part of this process, we agreed to do a community service, I'm sorry, community survey annually to our residents just to kinda try to foster communication with them. We're just in the early stages of talking about it at this point, but some of the ideas we had, we wanted to pull the public on their, you know, thoughts about the general level of service that we provide, their satisfaction with public safety as a whole and suffering, any specific interactions they've had with members of our department and what kind of areas they would like to see us improve on or different programs they may like us to look into. We're, we're open to suggestions or comments from the board, you know, if they'd like anything included in the survey. But at this point, I just wanted to make you guys aware that we're talking about it and just to make sure that the board is okay with us moving forward with the survey. The survey won't cost anything, there's several different sites and different ways to do electronic surveys for free, so there's no cost to it, it's just something that, you know, hopefully we can get some feedback from our residents and see if there's any, you know, any areas they think we can improve on. So if the board has no questions or comments, that's all I have for my update.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. Will the public be able to reach the survey by like a link on Facebook or a link on?
Yeah, it would depend on, it would depend on how we do it. We've looked into Survey Monkey and a few different ones. We could post links to it on the villagers' site, the police department's site, you know, our Facebook page. We could have it sent out through Constant Contact, so, you know, when it gets to the point that if we decide we're gonna move forward with this and the board is good with it, we'll try to get it out to as many residents as possible.
That's, that's, that's all I can ask.
Great. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We already did the grant program, but Fred already came on there and now we'll go to Kathy, Culture and Recreation, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi Kathy, how are you? How's everybody doing? Very well, thanks.
So I submitted the tentative events for 2022, so if you have an opportunity to look those over, once we get the events dates all set, we can start to put them out on the website, we can start to put them out in Constant Contact. We saved the dates for the year so that other organizations can see when our events are and we don't all clash. So that's what I have submitted for tonight. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them and then we can go over them if you like on next Monday night.
Thank you so much, that's a great idea.
One question I have is, you think you'll be ready for next Sunday?
Of course we can, Fred. We're ready for anything.
Tables, we're gonna set up chairs, we are so committed.
We got everything, everything all set. Whenever, whenever the word goes, we are ready to roll.
Fred, there's no dancing on tables like the last event.
No dancing?
No, there's no dancing on tables.
By the way, you won the competition, but we wanna plan it better next time.
Who are you talking to, Fred or to me?
No, Mike, I can't dance like I used to, so I won't be on the tabletop.
I'm not gonna win a dance contest over Fred by any means.
Okay, Charles, feel good?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you.
Department of Public Works? Charles?
He's on the phone, he has. I don't see his name on the list. Oh, yes, yes, I see.
You're muted, Charles.
Is there something he has to press on his phone to unmute?
Give him a second, he'll figure it out.
Yeah, it's on the, oh, I see, it's a phone. Maybe he's gotta press on the screen.
No, this, no, this is a certain code, I don't know if it's star nine or something. Mr. Janito can probably confirm what the code is to unmute.
This is star nine, Mike?
Not sure if it's star nine, I know Charles has done it before.
Yeah, he did it.
Give him a second.
Nobody will do anything to make the taxpayers buy him a computer, the trick.
Well, he has a new computer.
I know, he does, Joe, I remember, I'm kidding.
Give the guy a second, we'll be okay.
Charles, try star six if you can hear us.
I think Joe's texting him now, right?
No, I'm not texting him right now.
Star six.
There he goes.
He's on.
Whatever you did, Charles, you were unmuted for a moment, try it again.
Now he's on, he's muted again.
He's unmuted.
Okay, I think we got it. Can you hear me?
Charles, thank you.
All right, okay, I got it finally, okay. All right, good evening, Board. The first item is discussion regarding a stainless steel container that'd be able to utilize our lift-and-go truck. This would be at the wastewater treatment plant. Currently, we have a very old dump truck that is utilized to transport sludge to Hillburn, the county facility there in Hillburn. So this would, by purchasing this container, it would eliminate the need for that truck. The truck through, as a result of being in that environment, the electronics and other components of the truck end up needing to be replaced quite frequently. This would eliminate that, that situation. Talking with Michael, as guys, we had some discussion a few weeks back, we would be able to utilize the wastewater treatment upgrade project funding to purchase this container. Is there any questions?
Good to hear.
And I've seen that truck and we've talked about it many times, Charles, that's probably a good.
Charles, just to let them know what the price is, what's the price?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, it's $46,000 and that would be, it's a sole source from the truck manufacturer.
For, Charles, for a purchase, that's over the bidding requirement, so we need some justification and nobody else can provide that.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah, we certainly could do that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know the threshold is $35,000.
All right, Charles, go on to the next, to the next item.
Okay, I'm sorry. So next item would be, we're currently reviewing applicants for the vacant street and refuse department labor position. So we just got some applications in today, matter of fact, so I'm not, we're gonna, gonna review those applications. And I'm not sure if we would have a candidate by next week, but I wanted to at least advise the board that we are looking to fill that vacant position.
It's in the budget, let them know it's in the budget, Charles.
Yeah, yeah, it's, again, it's a, it's a position that, it's a vacant position, it's in the budget. It's as a result of a couple promotions that we, the board made last month or so. All right. And then, all right, so next, the item B is to extend the agreement with Donato Marangi Inc. for refuse and recycling collection container service up in Bon Air Stone Gate. The contract, initial contract is a two-year contract with one two-year extension. So we'd be looking at asking the board for that extension. However, I had some discussion with the mayor. We've been advised by the county that as effective, or as of January 2nd, 2024, the tipping fees are going to be increased significantly. Currently, we're paying around $77 per ton. They're saying it's gonna be at least $99 per ton, so we're not sure the exact number, but they at least gave us a range of where it, where it might be, so.
Charles, can I just interrupt one second, Charles?
Yes, absolutely, sure.
I, I just wanna, I, I know we have talked about this, but what I like to do is I like to get Terry to look at this because if we can hold them, if we can hold them to the contract at that number, we'd actually be helping the residents of Bon Air Stone Gate, so, and I love to do that. They would have to incur the cost, so if we could just send it to Terry.
Someone can get the contract to me, I'll take a look at it and see whether or not.
Right.
Yeah, I suspect there may be a clause with respect to that, but we'll take a look.
Right.
I have a question. So you're mentioning Bon Air and Stone Gate, what about other condo communities such as the Knowles? And, you know, are they handled by the same outfit or is it a different contract?
Well, the Bon Air Stone Gate is contracted through the village. Any other areas would we have their own contract with their individual condo associations?
Thank you, okay. I just wanted to clarification on that.
Okay. Let's see, the next item here would be authorizing, authorizing the solicitation of form of bids for the water department chemicals. So this is something that we do every year and it coincides with the fiscal year. So the, the bids that are submitted run from June 1st to May 31st. Any questions there? Okay, next item. Okay, uh, let's see, yeah, next item would be. Yes. Would be to, we have payments that are, or application for payments to be authorized as part of the Goshier project. The first one is for the backup power for critical facilities. The application number six, Pingam Deutch. And it's in the amount of $215.13. And as, as we had discussed before, it's a requirement from Goshier to have the board approve these apps. And then the, there is this, another one, it's for the other project, the hardening of the water treatment plants. And that is in the amount of $834.72. And the next item is authorization for application of payment to same project. This is the hardening of water treatment plants project, the TAM Enterprises for $51,110. Next item, again, the same, same project. This is for Meel Electric who has the electric contract and that would be an amount of $11,637.50. Next item, again, another application for payment. Now, this is again, Goshier project, but it is the the backup power for critical facilities and that is hush. And I don't, currently I don't have that dollar amount. So if I don't get the application in the time of the matter, we might have to table that one. The, the next item here is authorizing a change order for Meel Electric for the wastewater treatment upgrade project, contract 1E in the amount of $49,892. This cost will be funded from project contingency funds to be confirmed by the treasurer. And just so you know, the change, this change order is a result of of the replacement of multiple underground electrical conduits routing from a sludge building to the digester building. The conduit, conducts, the conduit and associated conductors were badly corroded as a result of being underground for 40-plus years. Do you have any questions on that item?
No, thank you.
That was an unexpected repair, correct? An emergency, more of a?
Yes, 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 it was. It was not part of the original scope of work.
So that's coming out of contingency fund, correct?
That would, yes, it would.
I just wanna be sure they, it cleared everyone, that's all.
Yeah, this is, Michael Janito, we have to make sure the EFC is aware of this because that's an EFC-funded project. So Charles, I don't know if you sent any information to the EFC on that yet?
I, I would have to check with Delaware Engineering to see if they in fact have. I have not, but I will check with them and see if, see if they've done that.
And Charles, this is all within the scope of the original contract or this is an emergency?
No, 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 it was outside the scope. So what happened was we have underground documentation of where conduit and underground piping are. In this case, the documentation was slightly off. So how we encountered that was when we were excavating for the building, the conduit was actually running through the edge of the building. And that's when we encountered the fact that the conduit and the, and the associated conductors were in very, very bad shape. So one other option we would have had was to try to run it through the building, but because the condition of the, of the But be, because the condition of the, of the conduit was decided that we it'd be in the best interest to reroute it and that's what we ended up doing.
Alright, so, so basically, the condition, it wasn't anticipated, but it's, I'm looking at it from a bidding aspect, but it's within the general scope of the original contract, just an anticipated addition?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so the last item that we have here is, is another change order. This is in regards to the Goshar well two, well number two and well number four project. And we've had some discussion with, with the mayor and treasurer and, and also I believe with the clerk. So what, as a result of WIC's law, we have to separate out these contracts. You have a GC, electrical, and in this case, an abatement contract. No abatement contracts or no abatement bids were received. It was decided, Goshar decided that they would allow to have the general contractor bid out the, that work and address it as a change order. They did do that and we had some very, very high numbers that came in. The highest number was like four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So we end up, the consensus was that if we prepared a site-specific work plan and applied for a New York State Department of Labor abatement variance, that would dramatically reduce the cost. So that's what we did. We did get the approval from the, on the variance from the Department of Labor. And the, the bare cost of the abatement came down dramatically, down to thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. However, the, does not include the GC markup and some related preparation work with. So I don't have a final number on that as of yet. I'm hoping I should have that in any, within the next couple of days.
Charles, would it be fair to say that number would be about fifty thousand dollars?
Originally, the, the engineer record was Dewberry had, had figured it was going to be between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars. So that's when, you know, we looked at it and the numbers were, I mean, it was just horrific. And so we were able to, you know, put together that site-specific work plan and the variance and rebid it and we're able to save some money.
But is it reasonable to say that markup would be, the markup wouldn't be sixty thousand? The markup could be anywhere.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. So I, I apologize. I, I'm not, I believe it's gonna be a markup is around ten percent, plus there's some other associated. So yeah, probably under sixty thousand dollars. Yes, you're right.
Right, okay, yeah. So originally, because of, because of Charles, Mike and, you know, and myself, but I'll say mostly Charles and Mike, they, they, they went around the plan a different way on how to do it. And by doing that and doing the extra paperwork, asking the Department of Labor, it turned in from original number of four hundred thousand and another one, three hundred thousand to approximately fifty thousand dollar project. That's where we're at, so that's.
What an improvement.
So, and I give more of the credit to Mike Janito and Charles.
Thank you, Mike Janito.
Also, Charles, could you tell them about how we extended the Goshar time on the project? So we use the Goshar money instead of the funding on the taxpayers' money?
Yeah, so we most recently received an extension from Goshar. We had received a couple of extensions on this particular project. The last extension only got us to June of, of this year. The most recent extension now gets us to the end of the year, December thirty-first of, of this year. That will certainly ensure us, the, because the project is gonna be, it will be completed in around, in there on that timeframe, if not sooner. So that will ensure that all Goshar funds will be utilized prior to any sovereign funds being utilized. So that's a, that's a, a big, a big plus and it was really good news to get that.
Great, Charles.
Charles, just, Charles, just to confirm, you know, for the public's benefit or whatever, Goshar, it's Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you for that, Charles. Truly appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Not at the moment. I guess we'll find out more. We have to tell us. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, Charles, very much. Treasurer, Mike Janito, please.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Board. We are going to have three things for the agenda. The first one is a resolution. What had happened back in the early part of this fiscal year, around June, was the air conditioning units in the police department went out. It required a major replacement and amounted to twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. At the time, we charged it to the building repair costs. But apparently there won't be enough money to run through the end of the year. So we're asking to move twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars from the contention account over to the building repair account. That's our first resolution before the board. The second one is a resolution to fund for justice court consultant. As you probably are aware, the budget when it was adopted provided for two clerical staff members to be replaced in the court, justice court. And I guess they were doing searches and people weren't available or people that were available, weren't interested in the positions. In the meantime, they used the former court clerk as a consultant and we had her under contract to pay her a fixed amount for her work. What the court has been doing has been using the consultant until this time. And there, the money in the consultant's line is not there, but the money in the salary line is there. And in order to move the money over, we, we need a board resolution to do that. And then the final thing that we have with you is the authorization for the mayor to sign a contract with Barard and Associates. They are currently our auditors and we went out for a bid. We submitted at least nine different firms expressed at least an interest in the RFP, but only three of them actually submitted proposals. Barard and Associates did come in with the lowest cost proposal, even though that wouldn't be the determining factor alone because it's a professional service and you do want to make sure that the service you're getting is the proper one. In any event, we're very pleased with the work that they do. They're very competent. And at, at that, they also provided the lowest cost of any proposal submitted. That's it for us.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
I, I do think that, that they do a fantastic job. I, I pretty much think everybody agrees with that.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any trustees have any updates you'd like to bring up here, folks?
No, I don't have none. You have anything, Joe?
The only thing I have is that the third grader class is doing a little project, and I shouldn't say little, but they're doing a project. And I'm looking forward to seeing what their project is and what it comes out to. And they're, they're kind of doing a governmental, where do, where do they think that it would be fun? Or not fun, but what would be good for them as third graders to help our administration? So I thought that was a really interesting project, so I'm kind of engaged with that. And we'll see, you know, they have a couple of weeks to sort of put their stuff together with their teacher and then we'll go from there. All positive, all positive. I, I just think it's great that our children are so engaged.
Very nice.
Yep.
Yes.
And I want to thank Mike for actually originating this wonderful help to the people of Ukraine. That's a great thing, Mike.
I'll have more details tomorrow, but I want to make it a, a community event where, you know, people, you know, they, they come and they, they pay something to come in. We'll have music, food, you know, a nice time, some tricky trades, you know, we, we can't always go back to the same sources. But whoever wants to, you know, donate or whatnot, we just want to show support and solidarity for, for, you know, for refugees, you know, the part. We're not, we're not here making political, you know, statements. We're making humanity statements.
Right.
I think we can all agree on that.
Sounds good. Yeah, the feedback that I got was very positive that, that we, the village board are doing. Very positive about it.
It worked well as a team and I, and I enjoy working with all of you. I, I'd like to just mention that I, I, I would, I'd like to do almost like a, down in the summer, early summer, maybe like a barbecue. You know, there's all these different people had to do barbecue and things like that. I'd like to do a barbecue event. You know, maybe down at the ball field or something, different people come in like a competition. So I don't have enough details yet. So it's just an idea I'm throwing out there and some people, sometimes when I put an idea out there, people come back to me because I like the community, you know, sharing, you know, what they know, what they feel. And, and I really, and I'm, I'm starting to work on this here. I'd like to see a farmer's market back in the village. I think it brings a strong sense of community. So I think a farmer's market, it's just, it's just something that we can all, I know we've had it before and, you know, and for whatever reason, it's not there. But I go to the positive. So let's see if we can do that and bring that, that event, you know, the old Saturday morning thing. I remember years when they had it, I walk across the seat, I see Marcelo over there buying things at his restaurant, you know, other people too. Him, I remember the most, you know what I mean? Because we talk the same, me and him have the same accent, so. That's why I remember him the most, but that was important to me. Another issue is I, I talked with a, an attorney in town, his name is Brian Sickel. Brian Sickel had come forth with a project to this community a little while back where they wanted to do some, you know, apartments slash condos on, on, on this different property he owns. So my attitude, you know, what I conveyed to him was, and, and I was on with, with Terry Rice also, was that we, we're, we're looking for ratables and we're looking for responsible buildings, but we're also looking to make sure they have the right parking and whatnot. So I said if he has a plan, because it would be, it would be a zone change, that's not my choice, that's our choice. I, I would like to, I would like him to present a plan which I can present to all of us and we could look at. And, and then think, instead of him going out and spending even more money and more money, if, if we're not even into it and if we don't even want to consider putting into a comprehensive plan, I don't want to, I don't want to tend to waste his energy or our energy. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I, I, oh, we just got word that we have the DJs available for our event on Sunday. I'm sorry, interrupted, okay? But things are coming together, right? So, but I, again, I, I don't have a lot of, the full plan on this by any means, but it's something I asked them to come forth. But I think parking, if you don't have enough parking, you can't do it, right? We've learned, we've learned from other projects in this village. If you don't have enough parking, we can't do it. If they have to be, sometimes, sometimes greed can't be, you know, can't be your only guidance. Maybe, so it takes a little longer to make your money back or, or different ways. So that, that, again, I'll, I'll, if I get information on that, I have very, very limited information, I will, I will share that with this board. You know, what I know, you will get to know.
Okay.
And I think that's it for myself. And anything else, anyone? Nope, okay. Would like to make a motion to, to close the workshop meeting? Make it a second? Folks, have a nice day. Any questions? You always know where I am.
Yes, thank you. It was nice to see.
One, one, one thing, if I close the meeting, can, can everyone get to me on what they think about next Monday's meeting? If you want to do it live, you registered to it live? Or you want to go to, you want to go by Zoom?
I don't.
I mean, everything's open. You know, the governor says everything, everyone says everyone's open, so what you, if you want to give me till tomorrow and get everyone, get back to me, whatever you want to do, okay?
Alright, alright.
Okay?
We'll get back to you.
I, 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 I'm ready to have the open, you know, I'm ready to go to a meeting, so whatever. You know, you know, live in public, you know, so, but whatever everybody wants is fine, okay?
Yeah, whatever the board decides, I'm a hundred percent in.
I prefer Zoom, I'll tell you that. I can hear better.
Okay, alright. Everyone have a nice day. Hope to see everyone on Sunday, okay?
Okay.
You got it.
Thank you very much.
Stay safe, gentlemen.